Management. All right, welcome to the February 12th, 2013 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Would, I need to get back to the agenda, I apologize, I am running behind today. Kim, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks.
Counselor Sherman?
Here.
Counselor Lehman absent, Counselor Clay?
Here.
Counselor Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Tabke?
Here. Item number two, approval of the agenda, are there any additions or corrections? Counselor Sherman?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Saying by Counselor Clay, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number three, public hearing to consider tax abatement for Emerson Process Management. Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing to consider tax abatement for Emerson Process Management.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Saying by Counselor Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, Mr. McNeil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we are here tonight to consider tax abatement for Emerson Process Management, we have some people here tonight that will give you more information about the company and the process, so I will start this, the location is one that you are familiar with, this is the ADC two site, it's one hundred and eight acres total, the location is just south and east of Valley Fair, south of Highway 101 and Union Pacific Railroad Track, as you are aware, this is something that has been discussed for a number of months, it's a partnership between the city, the county, the school district, First Stop Shop, Scales Economic Development Arm, and Greater MSP in the state, so there are a number of players involved with this, in addition, of course, to the primary person, the primary entity on this Emerson Process Management. Just to show the school involvement on this one, the, I don't know how to distinguish between the colors on this, but this is actually in District 191 Burnsville Eagan Savage, just inside the darker color, the Conklin site is in the Shakopee School District, just to the east of that is the westernmost boundary of District 191 Burnsville Egan Savage, we'll talk more about that later. With that, I would like to invite Brian Harstad, Brian is the Chief Financial Officer for Emerson Twin Cities, and we'll talk about the company and what it does.
Thank you, Mark. All right, evening again, Mayor, councilors, I thought I'd walk you through quickly just a few slides to give you a bit of an overview of the company and our, on the project that we're working with right now, so I'll welcome any questions as we do that, I'll move as briefly through each of these, so Emerson Process Management, as you know, is the parent company that we, Rosemount Incorporated is part of, we're about an eight billion dollar global company, and we have three major business groups, valves and regulators, systems, and measurement, and measurement is the piece of business that Rosemount works in, so as a family of companies, we all sell to the same type of customers and provide a total solution globally. Rosemount, as you may know, is a Minnesota company originally, we were founded in nineteen fifty-six in the aerospace industry, we took that technology into the process markets and have been a part of the Emerson family since nineteen seventy-six, and are a global leader in the process solutions that we provide, it's just a pictorial of some of the products that we produce, and we group our products by the type of measurements that they make, so pressure, temperature, level, and flow, and we have some marine applications as well, so those are representative of the products that we distribute and manufacture in Chan Hassen today, in Eden Prairie. We serve the process industry, or the process business, so it's just a example of the type of applications that our products would go into, measuring pressure in a vessel, or temperature in a distillation column, flow of, flow through a pipeline, and then our sister business units kind of tie that together with control system and valves, so that's the industry we serve. We have a very broad customer base, we have experience in a lot of different industries, the energy sector is really what's been driving our growth for the past few years, but chemical, pharmaceutical, pulp and paper, metals and mining, are some of the other industries that we're pretty active and involved in, so a broad customer base, which has helped us become a very global company, today we have eighteen dedicated sites around the world that produce Rosemount products, the ones I pictured earlier, and then we share facilities with other Emerson divisions throughout the world, and Rosemount, as part of Emerson Process Management, has over seven thousand employees globally today, and Chan Hassen, as this shows, is our global headquarters, that has our global technology groups, so a high concentration of engineering talent here in the local area, and that's the site that we are obviously looking to expand from, and we've got, have been, and plan to continue to be a strong local community presence, we've got very active programs in United Way Programs each year, active with STEM, best prep e-mentoring, as I mentioned in the past, and a very good corporate donations program that focuses a lot on local needs and education partnerships in the area. So we're excited about where we're at today, we've got two primary facilities in Chan Hassen and Eden Prairie, and we have, we are in the middle of a renovation of that Eden Prairie facility, but we are already anticipating outgrowing, outgrowing that space by the time it's finished, we have about two thousand employees here in the Twin Cities today, that number has grown by about two hundred over the past couple of years, and so it's that growth that is creating a need for both office space and manufacturing space, and we're growing here as well as in many of our other locations around the world. So that brings us to where we're at with this project, we looked, did a five-year plan, and estimated that we need three hundred thousand square feet to meet our business needs over the next five years, that includes both office space and manufacturing space, so the Shakopee option, which is a five hundred thousand square foot facility, we would plan to finish three hundred thousand square feet of that in this first phase of the project, which would be a capital investment of between sixty to seventy million over that period of time, and create an additional five hundred jobs in the Twin Cities area here, going into that Shakopee fac, facility, as well as some additional office moves that may come out of the other locations as well, as we kind of move our, move our groups around and rebalance the facility space, so very good jobs, a high degree of engineering content again within those, and as you can see, the average compensation that we're estimating for those, so that's just a quick recap of the company and how we got here today, and so I'll let Mark proceed, and welcome any questions as we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. As I noted earlier, they have focused on the ADC two building, you may recall that this was something that got started in two thousand and actually got underway before plating was even finalized at that time, when due to the bursting of the technology bubble, they came to the city and said, we can't afford to finish this, we need to close it up, as about seventy-five percent completed at that point, and it sat vacant ever since, so we're very happy that we have a company such as Emerson looking at coming here to finish it, they would anticipate construction-related costs about twenty-one million dollars, plus another thirty-five million dollars of investment to complete it in terms of equipment and service-related purchases, as Mr. Harstad spoke, the attraction to the city and to the county, in addition to occupying this long vacant building, would be the creation of the five hundred jobs over the next five years, however, a financial impact study, an economic impact study done by Greater MSP has indicated that there could be an additional twelve hundred jobs that would be induced or spin-off or support-type jobs, that could also be seen as a result of this, these would range anywhere from delivery drivers to service people to support staff at a number of locations in the Shakopee area, resulting taxes on the wages and on the sales is obviously of interest to the state of Minnesota. Now, in order for this to happen, Emerson has requested six million dollars in assistance to equalize this in another location that is considering, as I stated earlier, this would be a partnership amongst several entities, governmental and the school, plus also utilities. XL Energy has met with Emerson, they have sought, or they are seeking to have the Public Authorities Commission authorize some favorable electrical rates to help Emerson's costs as they get going over the next five years, and Emerson has also spoken with Center Point Energy regarding some of the other utility costs on it. Which brings us then to abatement for tonight, the public hearing is to request abatement of property taxes for Emerson for our standard nine years, this would be, according to the practices that we have done in the past, it would be on the new increment of twelve point one five million. To go through that, I'd like to introduce Michaela Hewitt from Springstead, who's the city's financial analyst, she has a PowerPoint, and will talk to you more about what the process of an abatement involves. Where's her overhead, Chris? I'm sorry?
She has the paper. Oh, I've got this.
Oh, okay. I'm not seeing it.
Oh, right there. This one, right there.
Okay. I don't think so.
No?
Yeah, we'll only see the document here. There we go, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Wonder if I can zoom it out at all. Thank you, Mark, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, I apologize for the slight delay of technology, I am Michaela Hewitt with Springstead, and provided to you earlier today was a memo describing the financial analysis that Springstead prepared in conjunction with the proposed project, the purpose of the meeting tonight is one to hold the public hearing on the proposed tax abatement project, which, as we've indicated, is one of the financing, single financing component of the total proposed incentive package, also, purpose tonight is to discuss the analysis that Springstead prepared of the proposed application for tax abatement assistance. Briefly, what is tax abatement, it's defined in Minnesota statutes four sixty-nine eighteen twelve to four sixty-nine eighteen fifteen, and it is an economic development tool that is commonly used by cities to incent development opportunities, it's not an actual abatement or non-payment of taxes, in, in all cases, the property owner pays the taxes, and once those taxes are paid, a portion based on the terms of the agreement are rebated back to that property owner. So tax abatement permits a levy of taxes by each of the entities for application towards a specific development purposes. With tax abatement, the taxes are captured from the properties that benefit from the tax abatement project, so in this case, it would be the, the property occupied by Emerson, and the taxes from that property would be abated each year, and applied towards the, and, and rebated back toward, to the developer and the business. The tax abatement, if approved, is adopted by a resolution at a notice meeting, which is the purpose of tonight, and again, with tax abatement, although the property is included in the tax abatement, they pay their taxes, there is no property owner consent to establish a tax abatement, and in the abatement resolution, that's also before you tonight, the, the terms, including the amount, the length, the public benefit of the tax abatement are all included within that abatement resolution. When considering financing options for tax abatement, there are a couple of common methods, one is pay-as-you-go, and this is where the projects would be financed upfront by the developer, and the developer would be reimbursed upon payment of the property taxes for a specific and defined dollar amount in term. Another method would be an inter, inner fund loan, in which the city would finance the costs upfront internally, and then use the future tax abatement dollars to reimburse that initial loan. The third method would be general obligation tax abatement bonds, and in this case, the, the city would issue the tax abatement bonds and use the abatement revenues to repay the debt service payments. And lastly, the probably the least common method would be just straight revenue bond, in which the project is fully constructed, and there is no general obligation pledge to that. So looking at the proposed project and request for financial assistance, as Emerson, as Brian and, and Mark have already described, the proposed project includes the acquisition and occupancy of the, the former ADC building, and initially, they would occupy three hundred thousand of the five hundred thousand square foot building, the proposed project would provide up to five hundred new jobs with approximately three hundred thousand, or three hundred as professional and two hundred as manufacturing. The financing request in the application is six million dollars, which includes a variety of funding sources from both the state and local levels, and here tonight for discussion is the abatement portion of that request, which is approximately five hundred ninety thousand dollars, future value over nine years, worth approximately four hundred forty-eight thousand dollars in, in present value terms, and that's based on a four percent discount rate. The chart on the bottom is the estimated project costs that were included in the financial information from the, the developer, and included within that, as already described, would be the acquisition of the existing facility, purchase of, some construction, purchase of equipment, some soft costs, and then additional project expenses, looking at approximately seventy million dollars. Looking at the sources of funds in which the project costs would be financed, the purpose of, of these two, these two columns side by side is showing, and I'll get into a little bit greater detail in our analysis, but it's showing that with and without assistance, what the project sources would be for this project. Emerson has traditionally financed all of their project costs internally, using existing equity and internal sources, so in the with assistance scenario, they would use private equity for approximately sixty-seven million of the projects, of the project costs, the estimated city tax abatement share would be roughly the four hundred forty-eight thousand, again, that's the present value figure, the purpose of illustrating that is we understand it would be a, a pay-as-you-go in which they would be given that amount over time, however, if they're trying to quantify what their initial upfront investment is, that's where we quantify that as an upfront amount of the four hundred forty-eight thousand. And then the remaining incentives of approximately two point four million is an estimate based on the, the existing participation levels from the other local entities and the state. One thing that's important to note is, is on both the, the total sources and uses of funds and the incentives, is it's somewhat fluid as far as what the actual project costs and so on would be, these are based on estimates that we know now, so that the total incentives of the two point nine million is based on an, an average and an estimate of the assumed both upfront and ongoing incentives that would be associated with the project. So in, in the without assistance scenario, there would be no other incentives, so it would all be private equity, and so we can see that the total equity in that case would be seventy million, which would match the total estimated project costs. Part of our review was to look at what we call a feasibility analysis of the proposed project, and the purpose of this is that the developer had identified a six million dollar, approximate six million dollar gap, and that's what they were requesting financial assistance for, and that was per their application. The proposed city incentive package, as we're focusing on tonight, is based on the availability of revenue sources, and so the projected available amount per the, the terms of the, the city as previously discussed, is estimated to be less than that initial request, and we'll get into a little bit more detail on what those amounts are. Our financial review of the project includes a return analysis, and we're looking at analyzing the project both with and without assistance, with assistance assumes that the project would move to Shakopee and it would receive the level of assistance per identified between the state and the local amounts, without assistance, it would assume the same project, but without receiving any financial assistance. Looking, working on the return analysis, we really focus on a review of two pro formas that would estimate what the projected internal rate of return would be for the project, and again, the two pro formas would be one with the assistance, and one would be without the financial assistance, to really see what the impact on the financial assistance has on the overall performance of the project, and the likelihood of, of the project proceeding in the city of Shakopee. Internal rate of return is the measurement of the potential return over an operating period, that also takes into account the time value of money, so it takes into account the projected operating revenues and expenses over a defined period of time, and in this case, ten years, and projects what that rate of return would be to the company based on the initial investment. It's important to note that an internal rate of return is more of a real estate transaction deal, in this case, we understand that there's, there's a, a component of it that's real estate, but it's also the ongoing operations of the company, so when we're looking at the internal rate of return, it is one measurement to understand how the, with the proposed assistance would impact the likelihood of the project proceeding, understand that there are also other variables that may impact the actual rate of understand that there are also other variables that may impact the actual rate of return and decision to move forward. Another measurement when, when looking at the return analysis is determining what the appropriate level of the financial assistance should be. And this is based on a combination of factors. One, the project feasibility and, and how feasible the project is. Two, on the availability of resources, as indicated before, that there are multiple financing sources that are proposed to be used to fill that projected gap. And then lastly, if there are, what the extraordinary costs may be that are being financed with the incentives and the, the financial assistance.
Could you take a second and talk a little bit more about the extraordinary project costs? What kinds of things are we?
In, depending on, there's different types of projects, and depending on what the proposed project might be, there, there are certain extraordinary costs, such as if you're looking at, for example, a redevelopment project in which there are extraordinary costs of acquiring the existing facility, rehabilitating or demolition of that building and subsequent new construction. You might, the barrier to re, to development in that case might be the extraordinary redevelopment costs. When you're looking at certain types of economic, economic development projects, you have to look at the increased costs of if there's higher costs of public infrastructure needs or higher equipment needs or, or so on that are, that become the barrier to development of it occurring. So it's not, and it, it's, it's more of a subjective, well, in some cases, it's a cost that is determined to have been extraordinary for that development to occur, and that's what's leading to the financial gap. So when we do a, a review of projects, we try to identify what is causing that gap. If it's extraordinary costs, if it's the, the feasibility of it of which not able to obtain enough upfront financing to close a deal, or if the returns are not high enough that would warrant them moving forward. So it's generally a combination. It can be one or more of those factors that would cause a project not to be feasible. You may be familiar with the, what is called the BUT-4 test or needs analysis. With tax increment, the BUT-4 test must be met before a project is approved. However, with tax abatement, it's not necessarily a statutory requirement. However, it's part of the due diligence process of ensuring that without the financial assistance, would the project move forward? So again, trying to meet that and, and review that BUT-4 test involve the review of this project with and without the financial assistance, taking a look at a combination of factors. One, the development budget, which would be the sources and uses of, of funds, which I've already described, the projected operating revenues and expenditures of the project over a period of time, typically ten years, and combining those factors together, what the projected rate of return would be as a real estate development deal. When looking at the BUT-4 test and the rate of return analysis, generally, if the rates lie below a reasonable range without the assistance, one could assume that the project as proposed would not proceed. And should those returns lie within a reasonable range, with assistance, you could assume that the amount of assistance is appropriate for the project. However, it's important to note that all of these projections are estimates and not of general indicators of performance, but they're not exact forecasts as we're basing a lot of the analysis on the, the estimates that are prepared, that are available at this time. So that is one thing to point out is these are all estimates based on the information we have available. So based on all of that information, the projected internal rate of return with assistance has been estimated to be six point one percent, and without assistance, three point five six percent. So in this case, the financial assistance has a positive impact on the projected return of the project from three and a half to approximately six percent. There are some market indicators that determine when a project should be reasonable. The general rule of thumb is, is approximately ten to twenty percent for an internal rate of return. However, as indicated earlier, this is only one indicator and may not be pickable, applicable for each project because there are other, other factors that may impact the project performance and the ability to proceed. One of the factors to incorporate that, well, and lastly, is that the acquisition of an existing facility should ultimately reduce the risk of developing that may warrant a tolerance for a lower return. One of the things that we use, I know that the rate of return of ten to twenty percent is a pretty big range. There are a combination of factors that would lead to that. One would be how much equity is required upfront, what the risk level of a project would be, whether it's acquiring an existing facility or constructing a new one. So those are all indicators that we use to determine if it's a reasonable return or not. So in conclusion, based on our financial review, it could be stated that the proposed project would be unlikely to proceed as proposed but for the provision of financial assistance, and that's based on the rate of return analysis, and that the projected rates of return that could be determined to be reasonable and not in excess of the market expectations. And lastly, the developer has indicated that the financial assistance is necessary for the project to proceed, and any incentives that were received would reduce both the upfront and the operating costs associated with locating the business to the city of Shakopee. The last slide I want to touch on is some of the proposed business points and factors of the project. The projected total assessed value upon completion is estimated to be twenty-one million. There's projected to be five hundred net new jobs created. The city's share of the financial assistance is, has been estimated to be one point four million, which that's again, an estimate based on the current project components, which would equate to approximately twenty-seven hundred dollars per job. And the city's share of tax abatement over the nine years is approximately five hundred ninety thousand dollars, which equates to approximately eleven hundred dollars, or approximately twelve hundred dollars per new job. The tax abatement assistance, any tax abatement assistance would be provided as pay-as-you-go as reimbursement for certain costs. And we are looking at approximate term of nine years of tax abatement assistance. So with that, I would be either happy to answer questions or allow the public hearing to continue.
Questions for Ms. Hewitt.
Councilor Clay, I was assuming we have some for you, no?
Oh, just kidding.
Just waiting for you.
Just generally.
Yes. If, if this goes forward over the next nine years, then as the, either the assessment, assessed value of the property rises or falls, or taxes rise or fall, that has then a direct effect each year on the amount of abatement that's being returned? I guess I'm, is there a maximum or a minimum for each year that's also going to be cited? Or is it going to be what it is each year?
Councilmember Clay, members of the council. There are a couple of different ways that the terms of the abatement could be indicated, and those would all be, the next step, assuming approval, would be a development agreement in which those terms would be identified. Typically, there, with, with tax abatement and as a pay-as-you-go note, there would be the total maximum amount, which would be as we're projecting the five hundred ninety thousand. So to the extent that market values would be greater than what we're projecting or tax rates would go higher and the annual amount of abatement would be increased, that likely would pay off the abatement note sooner, and it would shorten the term depending on how the amounts played out, or what the actual amounts were per year. Likewise, if the values went down and there was no minimum agreement on keeping those values, then they would just receive less per year and perhaps not pay off the full amount of the note.
So there is a maximum cap, but not a minimum?
That's correct, and that's, in part of with pay-as-you-go, that's where it reduces the risk to the city in that if the market values or tax rates go down, the developer bears the risk of, of not being paid in full that tax abatement note as opposed to if you issue tax abatement bonds, for example, and the revenues went down in your, if you were encountering a shortfall of your debt service payments.
Got it, thank you.
Councilor Clay, knowing your interest in valuation, one of the assumptions that we've made is in column two. As you can see, it is through the end of two thousand fourteen going to be valued at eight point eight five million dollars. That's what they're paying taxes on, currently of about three hundred sixty thousand dollars a year. Following completion for taxes payable two thousand fifteen, it will be valued at twenty-one million dollars. As you're well aware, as most people are aware, the amount of commercial industrial valuations has varied significantly over the past few years. So our assumption has been that during years four through six of the project, the valuation will go up by one percent. For year seven through nine of the abatement period, it would go up by an additional one percent or two percent over what the original improved value would be, if that's of any assistance to you.
Mr. McNeil, could you explain how the abatement works with regard to our overall budget? With, so the sixty-two thousand dollars, they pay the property tax, and then we abate that back. Do we need to increase the levy to cover that? How does that process work?
That is correct. The city will need to increase the levy by the amount of taxes that Emerson pays. As shown in taxes payable two thousand fifteen, it's about sixty-two thousand three hundred dollars. That will then be rebated back to Emerson. The net result, however, for Shakopee taxpayers will be zero on that. They've put in sixty-two thousand dollars in taxes. That's the amount they get back. The overall levy will increase by sixty-two thousand, but the net impact on taxpayers elsewhere in Shakopee will be zero.
So residents and other businesses do not pay additional taxes to cover this?
The only additional taxes they would pay would be for additional services that might be required by Emerson. If we have to buy a new fire truck or those sorts of things, that's part of what the overall levy helps to pay. But in terms of the specifics on that, then there would not be an additional payment required of Shakopee taxpayers.
Thank you. Councilwoman Whiting?
I just want to hit on pay-as-you-go one more time. I had some conversations with people that think if Emerson might leave before, after two or three years, that we'd be left holding the bag. And I just wanted to reaffirm that that's not the case, the pay-as-you-go. As long as they're continuing on the process that, that set forth within the agreement, they only get that year's tax abatement. Can you reiterate that?
That is correct. As, as Ms. Hewitt had indicated, one of the options that cities have is to sell tax abatement bonds at that, the city would then be responsible for making payments on those. So if the company then would leave after two or three years, we still have to pay off those bond receipts. However, with the pay-as-you-go, if they're not paying in, they don't get anything back.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Mr. McNeil, with this being the five hundred ninety thousand dollars, and we were talking about one point four million being the total city package, when will the other components come forward to the council? I know we have a list of them, but...
Let's take a look at those, because I think that's important, even though it's not part of the abatement, but just to show the partnership and the negotiations that have taken place on this. As we noted earlier, there are property tax abatement public hearings that have been called by Scott County, that will be a week from today at nine thirty on the nineteenth, and then ISD one ninety-one has called for a public hearing on March seventh at six thirty. So if you look at the participation on this, school district potentially will have a net present value of two hundred seventy-nine thousand. That could be considered. Scott County's net present value is four hundred four, excuse me, four hundred thirty-three thousand dollars. They also have some significant fiber optic opportunities for cost savings. We're still talking with Emerson on that, so that's not quite finalized at this point, but we expect to have those numbers fairly quickly. The city's participation in this, there's the tax abatement. We have SAC credits. As you'll recall, we had four hundred that were identified for economic development purposes. We're suggesting that up to one hundred twenty-five be offered for that. There are some SAC access fees that the city has that'd be for the city. That would be just under forty thousand dollars that we would propose to waive. We would also propose to waive sanitary sewer charges of up to about one hundred twelve thousand dollars. And finally, there'd be a forgivable loan. This is using your EDA money. There is an existing revolving loan fund, which has never been used by the city from what we're aware. It's four hundred, excuse me, two hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. We would suggest that and an additional one hundred three thousand dollars to come from the EDA fund balance for a total of three hundred fifty thousand dollars, which would be a forgivable loan, which according to what we will be putting into the development agreement, would be subject to the same sort of clawback provisions. If they leave before the end of the period, then the monies would be due back to the city on a prorated basis. So those are other issues which will be coming to you. We also talked about the state this afternoon. Mayor Tabkey and representatives of Emerson, Greater MSP, and Deed met with the governor's chief of staff and talked about some things that we need to get from the state of Minnesota. That includes some infrastructure grant monies, some Minnesota jobs training skills grants, an investment fund loan, and then finally, some sales tax exemption. We're not sure where those are going at this point, but we'll continue to meet with the state and hopefully, they'll be a strong partner on this as well.
Councilwoman Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mark, you mentioned that forgivable loans had some clawback. So the only thing that would be left out of that if Emerson didn't fulfill the agreement would be the, the SAC access charges or the SAC credits and the waiving of the SAC in the city trunk sanitary.
Correct, although at that point, you'd have an improved building, so whoever would get that later then would see that benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Sherman?
And then the SAC access fee, waiving that and the waiving of the trunk sanitary sewer charge, would that be coming from the sewer fund?
Those would be coming from dedicated funds for that. The Public Works Director indicates that those are healthy enough that we can consider those.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? All right, any other?
It's a public hearing.
Okay, perfect. Anyone from the audience like to speak about this project and city's participation with regard especially to the abatement, with regard specifically to the abatement, actually? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address us this evening?
Sir?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, public, and Emerson. I'd like to speak on behalf of this abatement. Everybody's concentrating on the numbers and the length of term.
And sir, you are?
My name is Bill Mars.
It's your first time?
I live at twelve seventy-nine Sider Circle. I look more at twenty to thirty years down the line. While the city is reviewing the opportunity to give some things up in return, look at what you get in return. A company that's going to spend seventy million dollars worth of, of building that is paying and has very low value, good infill use, jobs, high-paying jobs, and look at it after the abatement is possibly gone. You're still going to have that with the higher tax rates, the jobs and the benefits that Emerson brings. Look at it in terms of twenty, thirty, forty years and the good that it will bring to our city. I know we've used abatement in the past that's been controversial. I think the end game has kind of come and gone. We have thriving business parks. We have Dean's Lake that's a success and building on it as we go. I look at it in the big thing. For the last several years, this council and previous councils have looked at economic, economic development and looking at what's in the toolbox. If you want to be in the big leagues and get big businesses like this, these are the things you have to do. But they come and they last for a long time. And to give up what I think is a little, sounds like a lot to a lot of people, give up a million for, for a twenty-one million dollar business, five hundred high-paying jobs that may be here for twenty, thirty years, and if they don't use it, they lose it. And I think this is a win-win situation for Shakopee, and that's why I support it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Councilwoman Clay?
Move the close of public hearing.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Set by Councilwoman Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Any questions or concerns from council at all? Do we need to discuss? All right, seeing none?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. In the, in the resolution, item two point zero four B, we've been talking about five hundred new jobs. In the resolution, it talks about four hundred to five hundred new jobs. I understand that there's a ramping up process, but I don't want to have to come back and look at it and say, well, three ninety-nine, is that good enough? You know what? Can we say with any... Can we say with any certainty that it's going to be 500 jobs or 400 jobs? Maybe Emerson wants to speak to that.
It does use the word estimated.
Right.
400 to 500.
Ms. McNeil.
Mr. Mayor and Councilor Whiting, we have been operating under the assumption that 500 is what is going to be provided. However, in order to not do what exactly you're talking about, we put in 400 to 500, which gives us some room to negotiate on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to, Resolution 7278 is the one we're looking at, correct? Yes. Council Sherman.
I'll move for the approval of Resolution Number 7278, a resolution granting a property tax abatement for a certain property in the city of Shakopee for Emerson.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Standing by, Council Clay. Any discussion? Before we vote, I wanted to first off commend Mr. McNeil and the great work you've done on this project from the beginning to where we're at right now. And it's been a lot of work, I know, working with all the different entities, and thank Emerson and Greater MSP, and Deed, and First Stop Shop, and the county, and the school districts for being involved and talking about it and working with us for what I think is a great opportunity for the city of Shakopee. So thank you and congratulations on good work.
City staff, Mr. Looney, Mr. Leake have also been very involved with this. It's a process which will continue, so we will be back.
Up to this point, exactly.
This is the easy part.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Thank you very much. We're going to move on. Item number 4A, authorization entering into contract with Great West Financial. Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a fairly simple housekeeping item, not nearly as much of a policy decision as you just made. Simply seeking council's approval to sign some contracts related to our employee benefits. We are intending to expand our offerings for deferred compensation in an attempt to meet as many needs as we can amongst our employees. So the plan in front of you is provided by Great West Financial, which is a national provider of retirement and financial services and is endorsed by the U.S. Conference of Mayors. I'd be happy to answer any other questions if you'd like more detail on it, but it's...
All right. Any questions?
Before you largely, because I need your approval to sign the contracts.
Council Whiting.
How much more time is it going to take staff to handle four plans?
I'm optimistic that it's not going to take long. Part of that will depend on how much employee movement there is from one plan to the other versus employees selecting and staying with one, you know? I estimate half hour per payroll period, probably. So every other week.
But you got time, right?
My payroll, our payroll staff has assured me they can handle it. I have talked to her about it.
Very good. Any other questions? Council Clay.
No, I was just...
Oh, you were just...
I was just...
All right. You want to have a motion then?
Yes. I will make a motion authorizing the appropriate city officials to enter into the necessary contracts with Great West Financial for provision of the U.S. Conference of Mayors' deferred compensation program.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Standing by, Council Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Item five, entertain a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, February 19th, 2013.
So moved.
Council Sherman, do we have a second?
Second.
Standing by, Council Clay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are adjourned at 7:51.